On my clock, it is nine o'clock. And I will call to order the November twenty fourth, twenty twenty meeting of the Seline County Board of Commissioners. And I will ask, like Tammy is sitting in for the county clerk, and I will ask you to unmute yourself, Tammy, and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yeah.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Okay, it's kind of difficult for us to give a flag salute because I don't know if anybody's even got a flag that they can salute at this time, but we will recognize that we acknowledge that. I will ask, however, for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move into our citizens' portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. And let's see, Brad, are you controlling the the switchboard?
I am, yes.
Okay, do you have anyone who wishes to speak?
No one has raised their hand, Commissioner.
Thank you. We'll move to action items. Item number one. And Tam, there we go.
The approval of the consent agenda as presented.
And for some reason, I don't have the consent agenda in front of me. I know that the today's consent agenda consisted of of past meetings.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The consent agenda today consists of approval of prior minutes for October sixth, October twentieth, and October twenty seventh. Approval of tax rule adjustments is presented, approval of accounts payable and payroll is presented, and approval of the public forum agenda as presented.
Okay, you have heard the the agenda. Are there any commissioners who wish to amend or withdraw anything or add to the? I see no one, everyone shaking their head no, so at this point, we will approve the consent agenda. And now we'll move to action items, item number one.
RFA two sixty dash twenty temporary referral incentive.
Okay, and that's with Sheriff Solden and Marilyn Lemer, Human Relations Resources Director, and Marilyn and Roger.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This this request for action is to let you know that recruitment efforts for corrections officers have not been yielding very good results. We've had the same vacancies since July. We utilize the newspaper Kansas Government Jobs website, Indeed, social media, radio ads, TV ads, area billboards, schools. We also use our own website where we have an area where interested parties can register for an alert when we have an opening. So our request is to drive those recruitment dollars a little different direction to a temporary referral program that would align with our corrections officer hiring incentive. Our proposal is that an employee, if they refer a candidate and that candidate is hired and has a satisfactory job performance in six months of employment, and then also one year, the referring employee would get a five hundred dollar incentive at that six-month timeframe and then a thousand dollars at one year. This temporary referral incentive would expire after these seven positions are filled. So alternatives for action would be to approve the temporary corrections officer referral incentive, do not approve it, or delay it for further information. Our recommendation is to approve that so we can attempt to maybe use a different referral to get some candidates for corrections officer. And if that is approved, we would have some guidelines that we would be included, that we would roll that out with that. As far as the budget impact upon those seven positions, that would be ten thousand five hundred dollars if all seven were filled. And the sheriff's office budget hasn't funding to do that due to the current vacant positions. And I'll now deter to Sheriff Solden to see if he has some additional comments.
I just think that I just wanted to share that Marilyn and I didn't just come to this, we're kind of working at every angle we could think of to try and get people recruited. We just can't get anybody to apply, and when the few applications we've had haven't worked out, so we're just trying to get some applicants in here. And I think with the base accounting employees, it wouldn't just be sheriff's employees eligible for this, it'd be all the county employees. So if they could get somebody in front of us that they think would be a good fit for corrections, you know, anything we can do to get people in the door right now is going to be good for us.
At this time, I'll ask for Commissioner comments. I may do it a little bit differently today rather than just start to speak out. I may call on each one individually, if that's okay with everybody. Commissioner Weiss, do you have do you have any comments regarding this?
No, I find it pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, Commissioner Shadwick?
I'm good.
Commissioner Sparks?
I'm good.
Mr. White?
I hope it works. We've got to do something.
Exactly. I do have one question, Marilyn, on the the budget impact, the ten thousand five hundred dollars. Is that for the remainder, if they were to be hired right away, is that the remainder of this year? Or is that ten, I mean, what does that ten thousand five hundred mean?
That's what would be paid out to those referral employees if we're successful in getting that. Right now, there are several vacant positions, so those salary dollars, I don't expect we would get anybody on, you know, even towards the end of the year, or enough people on at the end of the year that will probably still have some vacancies after the first of the year, so the twenty twenty-one budget in the sheriff's office should be able to also fund that.
Okay, I'm following you. That that ten thousand five hundred is referral, and that would be a cap on that at that point. I would also suggest that perhaps we look at this, if this doesn't come up with something, that we look at this again sooner than later. You know, rather than wait ninety days to see how it comes out, I mean, I'm talking like the first of the year, you know. We need to get serious about this because particularly with the new jail coming on, and we need to be ready for that situation. And we need it to be safe over there, that's for certain. So I commend you and the sheriff both for bringing this before us. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to approve this.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the temporary referral incentives as presented by staff.
Is there a second?
I second the motion. I second the motion.
That was Commissioner Shadwick that made the motion, and Commissioner Sparks seconded the motion.
And Mr. Chair, was there any public comment?
Excuse me, you're correct. I would ask Mr. Bowers if there's any public comment.
Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hand at this time.
All right, thank you. So on item number one, which is RFA two six zero dash two zero temporary referral incentive, it has been moved and seconded to pass that that RFA. Are there further comments? If not, I think today we're going to do it a little bit differently, and I will ask for a vote individually. Commissioner Weiss? Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is also aye, so that motion passes five zero. We'll move on to item number two.
RFA two forty-eight twenty Title VI Plan Review with Marilyn Lemer, Human Resources Director.
Okay, good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning again. Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, the amendments and related laws state that recipients of federal aid highway funds cannot discriminate on the basis of race, color, age, disability, gender, national origin, or low income. The Kansas Department of Transportation receives federal funds, and in turn, the county receives funds from KDOT. This makes the county a recipient of those federal funds and responsible for implementing Title VI requirements on all contracts over ten thousand dollars and in all programs and activities, not just highway-related contracts. On September ninth of twenty twenty, myself and county engineer Justin Mater did participate in a review of our existing plan. The meeting did result in some minor revisions to our current plan. The plan is to be reviewed every three years for possible revisions or any time changes in the demographics of the agency's service area deemed significant. So this request, the alternatives for action is to approve and adopt the twenty twenty Seline County Title VI Plan, or do not approve and adopt. Our recommendation is to approve and adopt. The budget impact would be there's no budgetary impact unless it's not approved and adopted, and then that would jeopardize funding that we do receive.
All right, once again, I'll go around the horn asking for comments. I don't, okay, there, Commissioner Weiss, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, do you have any comments?
No, I don't.
Okay, Commissioner Shadwick?
I'm good again.
Commissioner Sparks?
It looks all ready to go.
And Commissioner White, thank you.
House cleaning.
I agree, and it would be a mistake not to pass this for certain, the way I see it, so I would take a motion at this time then, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the resolution as presented by staff.
Second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we, excuse me, I will ask for. I'll go ahead and accept the motions, and I will ask Brad, if there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak with this, I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hand at this time.
All right, thank you. Once again, it has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA two four eight dash two zero with the plan review. And all of those in favor, and I will start with Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
And Commissioner White?
Aye.
Okay, that motion does pass five zero. We will move to item number three.
RFA two forty-seven dash twenty Media Specialist Service Contract, Laura Lee Divis, Deputy Director, Health Department.
Good morning, Laura Lee. And Brad, with her calling in on the phone, do you need to unmute her?
I do. Can you stand by one?
Yes.
Could you ask Laura Lee? She's going to have to unmute herself.
Laura Lee, we need you to unmute yourself. Well.
Mr. Chair, while we're waiting on Laura Lee, maybe I can pinch the moment because I'm familiar with the item.
Yep. I don't know.
So this.
R nine.
I'm having a. As a contract employee for the Health Department. Provide media relations, particularly relating to the COVID nineteen pandemic, but also a number of upcoming projects. And so the proposed action is to enter into a service contract with Melissa McCoy for these services. And the funding will come from grants related to COVID and other Health Department items. And staff does recommend approving the engagement with Melissa McCoy to improve our community relations. And I'd be happy to try and answer questions, or Deputy Administrator Stanbaugh is familiar with this one as well. We've both discussed it with with Health Director Tiller.
All right, this time I would ask if there are any questions from any commissioners or any comments. Seeing none, is Brad, do you have anybody standing by on the phone who wishes to comment?
Checking now.
Excuse me?
I'm checking now.
Okay.
And no one has raised their hand, and I would like to add that someone has gone across the street to help Laura Lee get her phone unmuted, so hopefully that'll be done shortly.
All righty, thanks so much. At this at this time, then, I would take a a motion on the item that we're speaking of, RFA two four seven dash two zero.
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt Resolution two four seven dash two zero as presented by staff.
I second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we, and by the way, is there? Have I asked for public comment again?
You did.
Thank you very much. I did myself again. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA two forty-seven dash two zero Media Specialist Service Contract, and I will ask for a vote, starting with Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks? Commissioner White?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is also aye, so that motion does pass five zero. And I probably should have explained this to start to the public that might be watching. Every one of us is at a different location in a different room, you know, we're social distancing, we're we're going by the rules, and we're staying apart. So it's a little bit new to us to run the meeting like this, so I hope you can bear with us or bear with me as mistakes are potentially made and corrected. So.
Mr. Chairman, this is Brad. Laura Lee has has been unmuted, and she is on the phone, I believe.
Okay, hello, Laura Lee? Hello?
Hello, I just wanted to say thank you. This is Laura Lee, and Lauren came over and unmuted me. There was a problem with my computer, but thank you, Phil, for taking this over.
Okay, thank you very much, and Phil did a good job of pinch hitting for you, so we do appreciate you, though, calling back and and getting with us, so thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Bye.
Okay. We will move to item number four.
RFA two sixty-two dash twenty Revisions to Resolution twenty dash two two nine seven, Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the public, members of the commission, and so.
Can you speak up a little, Phil? Phil, can you speak up a little?
I certainly can try.
Okay, thank you. That's better.
Okay, back in July, your commission passed Resolution number twenty dash twenty-two ninety-seven, which implemented a requirement for face coverings, more colloquially known as masks, in the areas of the county outside the city of Salina. And the intent expressed by your commission at that time was to parallel the ordinance that the city of Salina had passed two days prior so that a consistent set of rules regarding the wearing of masks would be in place throughout Seline County. Last night, the City Commission of Salina did make some changes to their mask ordinance. It is not entirely clear when those will go into effect because as a ordinance of the city, it goes into effect upon publication. They believe that will be sometime this weekend. So staff has prepared for the commission Amendment Number One to Resolution Number twenty-two, sorry, twenty dash twenty-two ninety-seven. This amendment, if adopted by your commission this morning, is proposed to go into effect this Saturday. Hopefully, that will align with the implementation of the city's ordinance. The changes are relatively minor. It introduces a definition for the word room under Section One. It deletes some wording under Section Two A regarding distancing of six feet within indoor spaces. And it changes Section Three to basically shorten it, tighten it up. And then does add an exception, a new exception, for persons who are in a room with no other persons present, and they take off masks. And the other the other piece of this is when your commission adopted the resolution, you requested that it be reviewed every two weeks. And so I have tweaked that language a little bit to continue that if if your commission so desires. So those are the basic changes to, again, align with the ordinance that the city adopted last night. The alternatives for action for your commission would be to take no action, which would leave in place the existing language of Resolution twenty dash twenty-two ninety-seven, to amend the resolution to mirror the changes that the city of Salina made last night, or to amend the resolution to make any other changes your commission desires. Because the city's final approval was last night, I did not get this out to the commission until late last evening. So I don't know if you've all had a chance to take a look at it. But staff would recommend at this time that you go ahead and adopt Amendment Number One to Resolution twenty dash twenty-two ninety-seven. And I did hear from County Councilor Mike Montoya early this morning, and he has approved the form of that amendment. I'd be happy to answer questions.
All right, I will, once again, start around the horn here. Commissioner Weiss, do you have any questions or comments?
The one question, the health order that we met and passed on Friday, how does that play into this resolution? Is any of that covered there, or is that a standalone order?
The health order that was considered by your commission on Friday does refer to local mask ordinances and resolutions. It does not contain any mask requirements in and of itself. So it refers back to the city's ordinance and the county's resolution. And so if those are changed, as they were in the city of Salina last night, that would not impact the health order.
Okay. Anything else, Jim?
I know, I appreciate the explanation.
Commissioner Shadwick, any questions or comments?
No.
Commissioner Sparks? And he said no. Commissioner White?
No.
And I will concur with them that I don't have any questions either. Brad, are there any anyone online that wishes to comment on this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hands at this time.
All right, thank you so much. At this point in time, I will take a motion.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the amendment as presented by staff.
Okay, I can, I can see that Roger was, that he acknowledged the second, but he wasn't unmuted. So and then Commissioner Weiss did, did speak up and second the motion for you, Tammy. And that is that we approve, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 262-20 revisions to Resolution 20-2297. Further comments, and I will just say that I think it is wise to parallel as closely as possible when we see fit to go with the city's recommendation also and so that there's not confusion. So any other comments? If not, all those in favor, well, I'll go with the roll call again. Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
And Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson, also aye, motion passes 5-0. We will move into the informational items.
Commissioner, before we leave this topic, as sort of a transition between this topic and the next informational items, I did just want to discuss with the commission briefly that we did receive correspondence from the city of Salina. In addition to their passage of the ordinance last night, they have also asked if we would sign on to a letter to other area local governments encouraging them to adopt restrictions similar to what we have done. That letter has not been drafted yet, so I, I don't know what it says. But I was asked by the city if I could bring that up at your meeting today. So there you go.
Okay, if you recall, I did mention that very topic last week at our meeting that suggesting that we contact some surrounding counties, particularly Ottawa County and Lincoln County that didn't have any ordinances regarding that. After listening to the city's comments, I too want to kind of get into that a little bit further. I think it's a great idea. But I think, you know, we have people coming to work in Saline County that come from Republic County, Cloud County, Mitchell County, Ottawa County, and so on and all around. So I think it needs to go further than just Ottawa County and, and Lincoln County. So I think anything we can do to encourage them, their commissions to, you know, to look at the mask adoption and knowing full well that they're coming here, we're, we're a hotbed and maybe it's affecting them and maybe not, I don't know. But nonetheless, anything we can do to help that along, I think we should do it. And I will speak up for Phil in that he has one day to do something here. So I don't think we need to, I think we need to have a consensus that we do want to do something about this, but we can't do it today or, you know, this week yet. And I hope that the other commissioners would concur with that. So that's, that's my two cents worth there.
And you're saying that it has to be done today. Is the letter going out today?
Well, I, I think that was a kind of a thought that people had and, and we can't react that quick. I mean, we can't expect Phil to drop everything he's doing and write a letter. And besides that, I don't think the city was ready to write their letter yet anyway. So perhaps, perhaps what we need to do is let Phil talk with the city manager and come up with a dual letter or whatever they want to do. They're both pretty smart gentlemen, so I think we can rely on them to put something together. They know what we want. We've kind of stated that. So let, let Phil get with the city manager would be my suggestion. And I'll let Phil comment on that if he wants to or if we want to do something on our own. So, Mr. Weiss, did you have something or no? Sorry. Is that okay with you, Phil, if we do it in that manner?
Certainly, with this manager, I guess I would I guess I would feel a little more comfortable before something goes out if the full commission has the opportunity to see it.
Oh. Absolutely.
I concur.
Anyone else to want to weigh in or have a comment?
Concept is good.
I agree.
Mike White speaking. And if, if we can piggyback with the city on, on this, then I, I do, I do agree, we need to see the draft before it is shipped out. I'd feel better.
Anything we can do is, is going to be of a help, I think, anything. So, okay. Once again, we'll move into informational items.
Commissioners' comments?
Does any commissioner wish to make a comment this time?
No.
Item number two, announcements. Are there any announcements that need to be made?
I'll just remind everyone that the city county building, along with most other county facilities, will be closed this Thursday and Friday.
Okay, our next order of business is a executive session. But at this time, as, as we have not had a response from, from all of those that, that needed to put evaluations in, I'm going to suggest that we hold off and hold this meeting next week. And I think that that agenda is pretty clear for next week. So it'll give us some time and give Phil some time to look at those things. So we need to get all of those evaluations in as quickly as possible. At this time, I guess the only thing left is adjournment.
I move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting. I, I want to thank everybody before I do adjourn it that, you know, to going along with this. It's difficult to handle it this way, but we'll get it handled and we'll continue to move along. So, all right, all of those in favor of the motion of adjournment, please say aye.
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 And I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you for watching.
Happy Thanksgiving.